So I'm gonna go ahead and call our August workshop to order. Since it is a workshop, no formal roll call or anything is taken, but we're all here. And first thing up, like we discussed our last meeting, it seems like we have discussed the last three months, is our budget. And so basically, if anybody has any questions or anything they want to see changed before we vote to officially adopt it at our next meeting. Publish it, yeah. Yeah, to change it, yeah, because it's been published, so we can lower, but we can't increase. But is there anything anybody wants to see changed? If not, should we just move forward as is?
Let Ted have something.
Yep, let's Ted, do you have anything to add?
Nope, I think I'm good. And I will just point, I know last year, we had a conversation a little bit. If you go to the general fund budget, page seven, I believe, 7A. The total expenditures includes our, includes all our reserves. So don't think our budget's 8.7 million, that includes the reserves. You'll see it in the less cash. That was, and that's really, that's probably because this was a newer council, but the state mandates you spend literally everything you have, even though our spending is cash forwarded. So just FYI for next week, if someone's looking at it and says, what's going on? I remember asking them about that.
Yeah, yeah. See, if anybody works in fundraising like I do, it's just like, spin down on a grant.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, oh, we have two weeks left.
Yeah. Well, good, I'll be around until I'm not, so give me a call if anybody has any specific questions they want to ask. And even if I'm not around, Deb, my city treasurer, I've been training her quite a bit, and Ty can answer any questions you might have.
We've got your cell phone numbers too. So I know, turn it off and leave and all that, but actually, this worked out perfectly for your timing in that regard.
It did, you really did.
Because it's been published, so we'll have this on the agenda to officially adopt it and move forward at our next meeting, so, okay.
All righty, thank you guys.
Thank you, sir. Next item is transportation. All of, we're gonna talk first about the master bike and pedestrian plan, and Ann is here, so we wanna...
I'm actually gonna hand it over to Mitch.
Okay.
Mitch Copeland with PEC.
PEC, okay.
So he is the one that has been through it and been a jury in the works, and is sort of considered with their jackets. He was wanting to know what to talk about, so he said, well, just give a brief overview of the plan and see if you guys have any questions.
So Ann mentioned that she distributed this, so hopefully had a chance to look over it. But Bel Air was awarded funding from WAMPO, further planning local places program to fund 80% of this project. What we did was, we took a map that was developed in 2017 with some future walking and biking routes, and they said, we want to turn this into a master plan, are these the right routes? We want to engage the community. So we did a design charrette, or for lack of a better term, a workshop, with some community members, and also did an online survey as well. So we get a lot of community engagement about creating goals for this plan, as well as improvement types, how often people walk, where they walk, why they walk, where they want to walk to, what improvements they want to see. So ultimately, what, a lot of this information provides background into the nuts and bolts of what most people tend to focus on, which are the projects. So we have some strategies and actions that are non-capital actions as well, but most people do focus on the projects. So what we've done on page nine, it kind of lays out a future citywide bicycle pedestrian network. So the red is walking and biking, and then the blue focuses on just walking. And then what we've done is we've prioritized those into some near-term projects. Those can be seen illustrated or listed on the table on page eight, and then illustrated on the map on page ten.
This is a great plan, it's great that we've been awarded this, and it's gonna happen, so what questions do any of the council members have?
The good thing for the city is that there are grants out there, and of course, what they like is the master plan, because they, obviously, we're gonna cut up pieces of it and say, well, we would like a grant from here to there. And so they want to make sure that we're putting in a mile's worth or a few blocks worth that we have, that it's going somewhere, it's just not gonna be out in the middle or a street, and it doesn't go anywhere, nothing hooks into it. So that's, that's the reason that we felt that it was very beneficial for us to have the master plan, so that we can actually start applying for grants, and then show them this master plan, and the piece that we're applying for, how that's gonna tie into what we already have, or what our future plan's going from that location. Because you can see, there's about $800,000 worth of funding to do it all, so obviously, we're not gonna do it all, but we're gonna start trying to piece it out with some grants and things like that. Because WAMPO does, they have grants as well, that we're gonna apply for, but they want the plan first.
There have been grants that we have passed up in the past, because we didn't know where to put them, we had only had specifically outlined these as our priorities. So having this will help as we go forward and new grants can be available.
Is this list, is this actually prioritized A through I two?
That is not in priority order, these are the short-term projects, so basically, it's a menu. These are, this is based upon what we heard and our analysis, that this is a kind of a menu to pick from if you want something. And as you notice, the cost estimates on the right, those are just construction costs, planning level estimates. But, you know, as, as money becomes available, or you're searching for a grant, and you say, oh, well, you know, this one kind of fits the bill, maybe we should put this in.
So what is a typical prioritization mechanism?
So we look at our vision, our goals, and our strategies, that would like, so safety, connectivity, and access. So we look at, okay, so just for instance, people in Bel Air really want to walk to their parks, so those that provide access to the parks will likely be a higher priority. So it's not only from community input, but it's from analysis.
But this list isn't sorted in a priority order, is it? Okay.
So the next step for us as a city is?
This will be going to planning commission in September, at their September 12th meeting, and then it will come before the city council following their adoption.
Just wanna make sure.
The grants that we would potentially go after for these, would they be to implement this plan in a specific area? Like, do they grant typically say for sidewalks around a park, and the grant would drive a priority? Or is another step we need to take to actually force rank this as a priority list?
Each grant has, my experience is each grant has kind of their own focus. The sidewalks to school program has particular focus of connecting sidewalks, and population centers to schools. The sunflower trails grant, which was the one that we'd actually passed up a couple years ago, theirs is more wide open, but we had, we had talked about continuing the sidewalks in Central Park, but after talking to them, they said, no, we've already had two grants from their organization for Central Park, they wanted a different area. And we didn't have a different area that was quite as ready to go, so we passed that one.
What about the sidewalk on the east side to Isley connection? I think schools, getting connected to the schools is more important than parks. The parents can fit them to the park, until we get something in.
Right, and we've looked at that, your cost estimate is in here, but one of the big problems with that is the grading, there would have to be quite a bit of grading done in that area, and with all the landscaping, it gets tricky, because you have to have a five to six foot wide area that is at a 0.2% slope. So it's, just getting that to fit in amongst the trees and the existing landscaping is a little tricky, so that's gonna take a little bit more work. But I do agree that is, connecting some of those routes is very critical, it's just those kind of tricky aspects are gonna be...
So do we need to have an action item then, to prioritize these items to target the grants, or is this, you know, enough, so that we can just start looking for grants, and then when we get them, we kind of go through and make a priority call then?
That's really up to you, I know, when I'm looking, I, I don't physically go out and look for grants, but when I do hear about them, I see where they would fit in with our priorities, and see if there's any opportunities that may exist, bounce it off of Tristan and Ty to see if we have any projects that would fit into those grants.
I don't see that there's a need to prioritize them, we know what they all hear, what they all are, and then like Ann said, we didn't look at, okay, what would fit into this. Would you agree with that, or do you think we should?
Absolutely, from my perspective, it would be, what are you gonna rely on as your funding strategy? If you're gonna strictly rely on grants, completely leave it wide open. If you plan on programming funds in your CIP, or in your budget for projects specifically, whether we get outside funding or not, then maybe you should think about the other.
I think Ty's gonna kill me, but I think it should be probably left up to him and Tristan to bring them back to us, and so we don't have to argue back and forth, well, we need this one, and this one, and this one.
Yeah, that strategy makes sense to me.
If they would...
And absolutely, we want Ann weighing in on it as well.
And Ann, sorry.
I would say, planning commission has a concern, but I think you should bring that up, but I kind of agree with that, that we should just...
Yeah, but they're more of a board that'll come after we decide, after Ty and them, and we agree with them, the three of them, then it goes to planning commission. So it should be fresh to them.
And I'm, so I'm comfortable with the strategy of just kind of prioritizing this and funding it exclusively with grants, is that where everyone else is at on this, is that it should really be funded with grants at this point?
I think as, as we sit right now, with the rest of the priorities that the city has, I think that's probably the best option. I mean, you know, what might happen in the future, and, you know, everything gets sold, and we have plenty of money, then we change our, our strategy, but at this point, I agree with you, Justin.
Yeah, and I, you know, obviously, grants typically have, you know, 50 down to, you know, WAMPO's 80%, things like that, so the city will have to kick in, so that's the other thing we have to look at is, you know, when we're looking at the plan, is number one, will it fit and meet the grant requirements, and number two, can we come up with our portion to fund it? And so, and, and like, with the special meeting tonight, you're gonna see a lot of the grants require council support and approval and things like that. So like Betty's saying, is we may come to a recommendation, this is the cost, are you, you know, and then are you willing to support that with the match, and then you would approve it, and then we move forward, so.
Now, looking at this as far as the long-term projects, it talks about the future developments, do we have a plan in place for future subdivisions coming, and, and what is kind of required by them to, to accentuate this, this biking and walking path plan?
Yes, or codes require that in residential developments, that depending on the street, whether it's a main thoroughfare or not, there'll be either sidewalks on both sides or on one side, depending on the use. So as you drive around town, you see that certain, and then, and then, cul-de-sacs typically don't. But yeah, so when we work with residential developers, and you're gonna see, that's your agenda next Tuesday, Rock Spring Phase Six, there's an actual sidewalk plan that you're gonna see. And so then, those will then have to tie into our master plan of, you know, 53rd Street, things like that, to get them from the neighborhoods to the schools and parks and stuff.
Okay. Any other questions on pedestrian and bike plans?
Just clarification, these estimates here are just construction costs and not design costs.
That's correct, that's very high-level planning level. Like she had mentioned, there's some, likely some grade, major grading issues that you're gonna deal with with that project, that's probably not taken into account for the detail that it would actually do.
Okay. Then next, let's talk about the priority list.
Well, Mayor, could you just jump back to the WAMPO bike plan? So I mentioned in one of my weekly updates to council that I'd been approached by Park City and Kechai about maybe tying a master, a master walking biking plan through all of our communities, and since that point, since that time, Valley Center's also interested. So WAMPO has funds just like to create this master plan for us, that we could have a situation where all of us would join Wichita and Sudrick County, because if you think about it, we're looking at connecting bike trails in Wichita to us, which we have one on 37th, and Woodlawn will have one, so it gets us to that point. But then where do we go from there? And Kechai would like to be involved, and so we've talked about, well, do we come down Oliver, do we come down Woodlawn, how do we get over to Kechai? And then Park City would like to get people from Kechai to, to Park City, so that's probably along 60, 61st Street, and then they've even talked about Valley Center bringing, bringing in. So, so we talked with Mitch about maybe putting together a proposal, we would take the WAMPO to fund this, and so again, they'd pay 80%, and then the 20% would be split amongst all of us, that would be included. So I'll let Mitch kind of talk about what he's thinking and how this would work, and make sure that this is something the council will be attrition for soon.
Okay. So we were contracted through WAMPO to help local jurisdictions develop projects to be submitted for potential inclusion into their long-range plan, and their long-range plan, it goes up to 2040. And the reason you'd want to get projects in there is, once you get projects in their long-range plan, they're eligible for federal funding. So first, they have to go into their long-range plan, that's basically creates the menu of projects that are eligible for federal funding. And then, from there, you can pull them out and apply to get funding through their transportation improvement program, which programs specific dollar amounts to specific projects in specific years. It's a four-year program. So this is basically step one to get it on the eligible list. So we worked with Ann to develop a list of projects for, for Bel Air, and we have, we have 10 projects. So what we'll do is, we're currently developing cost estimates for these projects, and then also filling out the project applications for them, and WAMPO will go through and score those applications based upon the responses. So what we have here is just the scope of that project, just generally what that will be, and then some of the background for that project, that'll explain it a little more. So this is the, the list of projects that we have right now, with their, the scope and background.
Bicycle project, the inner-city connection is project number 10.
And that will need from you, is WAMPO is requiring that each jurisdiction submit a cover letter that identifies the priority of these projects for that individual jurisdiction. So you will need to prioritize these before we submit it to WAMPO.
And it's due on Friday.
Oh, boy.
On Friday.
Is this the recommended priority order?
No.
I would, I've been hearing your recommended priority order then.
And, and something to keep in mind, I think it's helpful to know this, is there's projects in their current program that go out to 2022. So they're looking for projects from 2023 to 2028 that can actually use WAMPO funds. So when, when you're thinking about these, think about, okay, well, this is generally the timeframe that we hope to get this project done. So I think you can think a little strategically about, this is, you know, maybe we'll, maybe we're gonna do a project before 2023, so maybe that's not quite our high priority. What we're focusing on is, how can we get WAMPO funds between 2023 and 2028?
So here's a map that highlights what's in here. I will say that I have a priority, and that is actually number one, from the UCD to 53rd Street. And there's several reasons. One is that I've already taught, well, we know the intersection of Rock and 45th is a pain, we hear about that, we know what it looks like, we know how the road is from...
We've been band-aiding that forever.
And so technically, from the railroad tracks all the way up through the intersection is Wichita's. So that's when people complain about the intersection itself, to us, there's nothing we can do, because we don't own that intersection. But I did talk to them, and said, if we put together a proposal, again, everything that WAMPO does is ranked, and when you have multi-jurisdictions, like 37th Street was one, where we partnered with Wichita, you get higher up on the list for funding, because you have more jurisdictions that are gonna benefit. So I asked them, if we put together a proposal from that, in, in their boundaries, through the intersection, fix that intersection all the way up to 53rd, if they would support that? And they said, yes, we would, we would partner with you on that. The other piece is, so we look at, where's our growth for commercial? And we know that we've got the intersection of 45th and Woodlawn, that's gonna be fixed with Woodlawn improvements. We've got growth on Webb, but Webb's already a four-lane. So we've got the corner of 45th and Rock, and then of course, what we're hoping to do, and we are gonna get some development, which you approve at 53rd. And so, so I think that would help grow commercial development. We also know that residential development, a lot of it's taking place here in Central Park, we do have some that's heading to the west of Woodlawn. But, but there is, and that's gonna be on your agenda next Tuesday, a new plat for what Gene Vittarelli's doing along 53rd closer to Webb. So, and then of course, we got the high school there. The other current problem that we run into, and Ann has brought it to your attention, is the little act that, the fact that there's no shoulders over there. And it's to the point where, you know, if you get off, your, your tire drops off. So, so that is my number one. And then from there on, I, I'm okay with whatever you'd like to do, but for those reasons, I think that we'd have a good opportunity, because we could, we could work with Wichita. And then the fact that we already have problems along there, we've got growth along there, I think it would help encourage growth. So that would be my priority.
So Ty, just a question, why would we, and there probably is a good reason why we're southing at 53rd and not going on with K254, and maybe bring Kechai in on that as well, but just a question.
So actually, two, two reasons. One is the cost, we have to pay a percent of that. So we know that Woodlawn, that's a mile, and we're doing similar things there that we do over there, so our share's gonna be a million, $2 million. The other issue is that the road from 53rd to 254 is actually Bel Air's.
Yeah. But it services Kechai as well.
Yeah, yeah. So now whether we could get them to, you know, partner with us, I mean, that'd be a question. But I think probably the biggest piece is, you know, if, if we can get this in the next five years done, we've got 37th we're paying for, we're gonna start paying for Woodlawn, and then we'll have another one. So financially, that would be my issue with at least get to that point.
How do you traffic counts come into play? Should we be thinking about our current traffic counts as a priority setting mechanism?
Mitch, what do you, what do you think?
You know, obviously, you would take into account all of the, the information that you have. You know, I think Ann would have probably a good idea if you're reaching capacity. I don't know if you have turning movement counts, but if you have just regular traffic counts between the, the intersections, that would just give you a general indication of daily traffic congestion. From my understanding, we weren't, current traffic counts weren't a major issue, except for the, the Woodlawn project that's gonna be fixed. So if, if your current traffic counts don't want improvement, then you're gonna be looking at, okay, so where do we want development happening, where is development gonna happen, and where traffic counts have been increasing?
Yeah, I'd have to agree with Ty as far as 53rd Street, or I mean, Rock Road, up to 53rd Street, just because, you know, that's one that you, you drive down and, and you know there's a drop-off. I mean, it's the way it's graded, I mean, it's, you know, at least you got a Woodlawn, you got a shoulder, I mean, it's, it just, it feels safer than what, what Rock Road does. My question is, with Wichita being part of this, would they help a percentage of the 20% as well, as of that?
Yeah, so that's what, on 37th, we actually split it, so the 20% local match, they put in 10, and we put in 10. Now that's because that was a full mile. Now, so we would probably look at, okay, you know, the intersection's X amount, from the railroad tracks up to the intersection is X amount, so your share would be 8% or something.
Well, and the, the reason I ask is, with, I mean, you know, Woodlawn, obviously, part of that is Wichita on one side, which is benefiting them, and they're not helping on that, right?
Right, yeah.
So I just want to make sure that they, along with the support, would be kicking in a little.
I think we'd be in the same potential scenario, looking at Oliver, we've got that same situation between, I think it's number five on here, 37th and 45th.
Yeah, my only thing with that, with them not having any housing, basically, there's one housing development on Oliver, that they don't, I don't think they have as much skin in the game as far as...
Yeah, maybe not.
They're actually citizens and stuff, so...
Well, going to Stucky, they do, and they promised this big bucks on Stucky.
Well...
They were gonna bus the kids, and all this kid stuff, and you see kids walking in the ditches.
More school district.
Yeah. Isn't that... Half, it looks like about half of that mile's kind of maybe, the frontage there is covered with Wichita, so it may not be a 50/50, but maybe they do 25 or something.
So with all 10 of these, do you need us to put this in order of 1 through 10, or pick our top three? I mean, what do we...
I mean, probably...
I, I think you need to put it in order, if there's some that you're not interested in, we can take them off the list. My strategy going into this was to throw all the projects I can think of at the wall and see what sticks.
That's what I was thinking.
Because I'd liked, the, moving forward, I would like the council to have an option of choosing A, B, or C, depending on where we're at. Instead of, last year, our only option was Woodlawn, because that's what was on the list.
I'm in complete agreement, I think, with our city manager on number one, for all the reasons he outlined, so we just have nine more to go.
Should we just all rank our 1 through 10, and maybe send them to Ann and let her aggregate an average, or what's the best way to do that?
Let her tie in, Tristan.
Let me ask you this, I mean, we, I think we have a, I think we have a fairly good idea of what, taking one mile of road from two lanes, the, the upgrade is gonna be. What about the, these, I guess I would consider smaller projects with like 45th Street, Woodlawn and Rock Reconstruction, the bridge, and then the, like the 53rd and Rock intersection? What, what kind of prices are we looking at there? I mean, is that something that, you know, as, as one of these projects possibly gets selected, you know, we, we, we think we could put some back to do that ourselves, because it's, it's a lot cheaper of, of the projects?
And one, just putting these into the Metropolitan Transportation, the long-range plan, does not guarantee funding by any means. You've got maybe a 30% shot at actually getting a project funded through WAMPO in that time period. So it's very easy to say, to have a project on the list and say, oh, Bel Air's gonna fund it themselves. 53rd between Woodlawn and Oliver is a prime example. We've got a developer who's very interested in putting that, in, in developing some property there. I can't remember how many acres, but it's a fairly sizable development, and if that gets started, we're gonna have to do that ourselves, we can't wait. Because that road, as you all know, is just barely hanging in there as it is. So we can always pull it off, we shouldn't put, put anything on until the next long-range plan, which is another five years away.
I was just thinking, as far as my priorities, though, right?
Sure.
There was something that we thought we would be doing, rather than, you know, one of these bigger expansion of road projects, something like that.
Then I would write those lower.
Yeah, okay.
So what did you learn from the KDOT review of Biden for?
So KDOT's review, we actually have four bridges. The first one is at Elk Creek, it's on, well, it's, it's on Rock Road north of 45th Street. That is a bridge that we inherited from the county, they have always been doing maintenance on that bridge, and it's in decent condition. We've got the bridge at basically 45th and Elk Creek, that's in okay condition, that's the one that I've been somewhat concerned about, and the Sudrick County Bridge Engineer was concerned about that one as well. And the Sudrick County Bridge Engineer was concerned about that one as well. The state wasn't concerned about that. The only thing that they didn't really know is they couldn't see the bottom of it because there's water in it. So they didn't know what the bottom looked like. So that's kind of an unknown situation. So it has to be ranked low, but the overall structure is reasonable. There is a bridge at 37th, and it'd be just east of Oliver on the new section of 37th. We walked, it's, we walked that, it looks almost brand new. So that one's in very good shape. The bridge structure that is denoted by the box at 45th and Oliver, just south of Oliver, is not in very good shape. Those are, it's three corrugated metal pipes. The north, two sections of pipe, the bottoms all rested out, it's heaved up. And they're a little concerned about that one. Not concerned enough to post it to prevent anybody from crossing it. But that's going to be, have to be inspected every year. So that, that would be probably one of my higher priorities, definitely not top, but kind of up in the top half, anyway. That would be easily replaceable by a box culvert. And we can get it out from the bridge side, so it would not have to be continued to be inspected. So it'd get off the KDOT bridge system.
Is that similar to what we did a little bit further north on Oliver? Where we had kind of the hole in the street up there?
That's, that's a similar situation with a corrugated metal pipe underneath. But these are like three gigantic pipes.
Three of them?
Three of them.
Just one?
Yeah. And so, I mean, these ones, they crawl through. They're so large. They're about four feet by three feet. So they're, they're significant. We haven't seen any, anything on the surface that would indicate it's compromised. More than likely, the soil is bridging the issues with the pipe.
So this is going underneath Oliver, correct?
This is going underneath Oliver, correct.
And that would, would that be part of a 45th to Woodlawn improvement?
It could be, or it could be a standalone with the Oliver, 45th and Oliver intersection improvements. And some of you remember that Trans Systems was hired years ago to do an intersection study at 45th and Oliver and 45th and Woodlawn. And the improvements at 45th and Oliver was running around $1 million for the intersection, for signalizing the intersection and putting in turn lanes. So that would, depending on how much has everything costed out, it could subtract from the overall cost of 45th and Oliver. But you'd add in turn lanes. It could be designed in such a way that it would work in concert with any future improvements.
I just know, you know, bridges in general seem to be kind of the top of a lot of newsmakers right now for construction, for grant considerations. So, and the last thing I want is, say, it's got to be inspected every year. All of a sudden, we have a road closure, and then we're in an emergency situation. As we're growing and growing, we don't need road closure that we have zero control over. So I would actually bump that up a little bit, maybe to.
It sounds like that might be a high enough priority that it wouldn't be something that we'd consider as a future project for WAMPO, because we're likely to do that before the funding era.
You're looking at 2023 at the best, or you're listening to the best, you're three, four years away from doing that project. They plan for us to fund it.
That's right. It sounds like we have some significant concern, we may be doing it before then. So maybe we should just take it off the list here.
I'd agree. And that's something that we could always do as a standalone, just replace that culvert. But it makes sense to do it with an intersection.
Is it something that we could submit to WAMPO for funding before then through another mechanism? I know we've talked about how sometimes they have extra money and they're looking for projects. Is that only to pull from the list that was put out there five years in advance? Or can you submit new things for that?
No, it has to be, everything has to be on, in the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, in that gigantic list.
Five years earlier.
That's why I'm trying to get everything on it we can possibly think of, so we have options in the future.
I'd like to keep it on the list, because I think it gives you the option. You can always pull it off, but you can't put it on.
Yeah.
Okay? So I think it'd be better to keep it on there, and we decide to pull it off and do it ourselves than we do it.
Would that be our number one, then? If we think it's the most likely thing that we're going to do in the near future?
I'd be okay with it being a two or a three, I think.
I think two.
I think number one needs to be a heavy hitter, like the road.
Yeah, like 45th or 53rd.
How, how does the force ranking affect the, what's going to happen in WAMPO?
I don't know. I've never been through the Metropolitan Plan project before. I am, I am sitting on the selection committee, so I have a little bit of insight.
So you can get next to all times and say goodbye.
I will do my best.
The reason that I'm asking this, because if they're going to go and say, okay, everyone's going to get their number one, then I would agree that this shouldn't be our number one. But if it's, if that, if that really doesn't have any bearing on the projects that are going to get selected, then, or there's some other impact that this priority has, then I'd like to understand that.
And they've got, they've got a fairly significant sum of money that they're working with. So I think every community is probably going to get a few projects. And how many, I don't know, and it's really all going to depend on how many are submitted. But with WAMPO giving funds for consultants to come in and help us out, of all communities come out and put project descriptions in there, they're hoping they get some pretty good projects.
Yeah, because if they're going to, if it's based on number of projects, then yeah, we probably want our most expensive projects to be rated the highest. If it's based on dollars, well, then we should probably just rank them in the order that we think we're going to do them.
Because it's, they've got safety considerations, they've got freight traffic, they've got economic development, they've got bike ped. There's quite a few different kind of buckets that they're looking at, projects to, to fit it to.
So are you comfortable, then? You've heard a lot of the feedback here. I think we're all generally in agreement as to what we're looking for here to putting a priority list together, emailing it out to everybody, and that way, if anybody has any significant concerns, especially the attorney's not in here, but I don't want to do the whole serial meeting thing, but I, I think that would be the best course instead of, or I'm happy, and we're here, we can go through every single one individually and, and score them right now. What is going to make it most comfortable on staff? Because we don't want the delays either.
Yeah. From what I understand, and these, these guys can, can correct me if I'm wrong, but, so what we're, this is a long-range plan. So what you're doing is saying, okay, all of these need to be repaired. We'd like to see them done next one year. The priority piece is, there's the tip, which is what they're actually funding for the next five years. So if you think about that, and we're just one of the pieces, Wichita, Sudrick County, they've got millions and millions of dollars that they want, Andovers even in it. So we're all competing. So I think the, the prioritizing is more for them and us, as staff, to say, okay, for the next five years, Bel Air, what do you want funded? We've got your list, we see all these things. According to your list, number one is Rock Road. And we, the staff, say, that's exactly right. And then we go to the board, the tip committee and stuff, and say, we have to have this done. And we got Wichita standing with us. We need this $3 million or whatever it is because of economic development, because of, because of high schools, or sidewalks, and, you know, if you get a tire off here in the ditch, we got commercial growth happening, we have to have this. And then, that kind of helps us with our argument that we're not just there as staff saying it, but the governing body says, yes, this is our number one project, and this is what we want done. Does, does that sound?
Yeah, and, and I might add to that. So Anne, we're lucky enough to have Anne on the selection committee. But, you know, what if Anne was not on the selection committee? You, as a community, are submitting a bunch of projects to five people to rank and then put into, or not put into, the long-range plan. So they get all of this information about, is it providing good access to schools? Is it relieving congestion? Is it helping serve freight? So they, they have their objective data to say, this project is good or this project is not good. But they're also asking for the, the community to say, hey, this is our top priority. It might not score all that well, or it might score a little lower than this project, but you're communicating to this selection committee that this is our top priority. Maybe it scores a few points lower than the other one, but we want this one funded.
I guess the question, because in my mind, is, is this something that the governing body needs to make a decision about? Or can we, can we do like a consensus, like we're having discussions tonight, and let Anne and go and set the priority based upon our discussion here? I, I guess that's why I'm wondering about it, because time is the best, and so you've got to have this done Friday.
And that's kind of what I was trying to get at earlier, that we all, yeah.
Well, can we change the priority order in the future? Once the projects are submitted, or is the priority order locked in?
Once the projects are submitted and they get accepted into the long-range plan, then we'll have the ability to choose any one of those that are accepted into the plan.
So.
Here's still, there's not one on here that we're all going to go, talk about it, that's the one they're going to fund. You know, we're going to be.
So it sounds like the priority issue is not so much an issue for Friday. It's, we, do, do all these projects look good? We want to submit all these projects, and I think we're all saying, yeah, these are all projects we want to do. And then, in the future, we need to have more discussions about the priority order. But I think we all agree that number one priority order probably is the Rock Road.
Yeah.
From a larger perspective.
You say that they need a priority from us, ones that submitted Friday.
Correct.
They do need.
Okay.
Well, and that's why David was suggesting, Anne, you know what our number one is. You know, you know, that's kind of what our consensus number one is. I think you probably know the shape of all the other ones a little better than what we do anyway. I mean, I know there are certain roads that, you know, I know Justin takes Oliver, because I've seen him turning on the coke when I'm going down 37th. So, you know, I don't take Oliver. So for me, it, it maybe isn't as big a concern, but, you know, very soon, I'll probably have to take Oliver, because my road's going to be torn up, so.
One, one thing I didn't see on here was Oliver, 37th, 45th. That's not on.
That's because it's done. Oliver from, oh, Oliver from 37th.
Five. It's not highlighted, but it is on the list.
Oh, it's not on the map.
It's number five, but it's not on the map.
Another thing I was thinking, since we're looking at all 10 of these, we were talking about how we want our number one to be Rock Road. Maybe number two should also be our street and save the, is it the bridge or the culvert for number three? I don't know. Just another thought in terms of prioritization. What was the estimated cost of the most urgent bridge repair?
Mitch is still working on those costs.
Yeah, we just got that information.
Okay.
I mainly, I mainly wanted to get your input.
Yeah.
If you're comfortable with myself and Ty kind of discussing this as a priority order, we're happy to do that. But we wanted to make sure we brought this to you, without your input.
I mean, should we be looking at a strategy where we want to do, you know, north-south roads and then east-west roads? Or do we want to, do we think we need to do, you know, kind of quadrants of the city?
They're mixing up. We're going to have people after you.
It feels like we should have some sort of strategy to how we're prioritizing these, whether it's based on, you know, the development that's going in, or the traffic counts, or some underlying way that we're making the decision, other than, well, it feels like we want this, or it feels like we want that. I mean, the, the Rock Road justification, I think, is really good, and that's why we're all nodding our heads, saying, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. But then, after that, how do we decide?
Well, the question I can add is, I guess maybe I'm not clear on the stuff that, I know WAMPO gives us the money and stuff, grants. But being we've already had 37th, we're going to do Woodlawn. What are our chances of even getting any of these?
They're actually fairly reasonable. This last year, when I sat on the selection committee for the projects, they didn't have enough projects for the money that they had available.
Oh, okay.
So that's, now, that's the first time that's ever happened.
It's going to flip now.
In, in the history of those that sat on the selection committee with me. But it's a possibility. I mean, it's, it's always there.
They could turn us down and give the money to somebody else and say, well, you've already got two big projects.
And a lot of it's based on need, growth, the safety improvements, how, how much it's going to affect the regional system and regionalization. It is what a large part of it's based on.
I just didn't want you guys to get your hopes up, and we weren't getting.
Is there anything that stands out on this, like this should be last?
Well, it happens all along. Not all cases. They say, well, we got funding for a project, but the community isn't ready. I mean, so they go to the next one.
The chances of all of them happening is pretty low.
Yeah, if they fund all of them, that would be a really good problem to have.
Yeah, but we have enough money for the match.
Yeah, that would be a very good problem to have.
So Jackie? So we're trying to figure out how we can prioritize it, because we need to have it done by Friday. Everybody agrees that number one would be Rock. But could, could everybody review and then send an email to Anne saying, well, my priority list would be Rock and then whatever number? And then Anne could then take all of that from the governing body members and then create it? Is that okay?
Yes, because it's, it's part of the workshop and process. It's not coming before, as official, before council is official to say business. And because they wouldn't be including other council members in the email influencing or saying, don't you think the same thing, kind of language, so that, that would be.
And I, and I actually would like it to start with a suggestion list from our city engineer.
And what we could do is, we could also send it, because we've got traffic numbers. So, you know, that's a lot of times what you look at is traffic numbers.
Today's Tuesday, I'm going out of town, so can I designate somebody to do my?
This has to be done before Friday.
I agree. Traffic numbers is probably the most objective way to do it.
So we could send out a map with the traffic counts, so you can look at that.
I will be back to Saturday.
Yeah, let's do this.
It's the only thing to consider, because you've got to think about the planned development there, too. You know, if we've got commercial development there, you know, something like that, will drive a significant traffic count change? But it's a good starting metric.
Well, another thing, if you look at Oliver, a lot of that traffic isn't, doesn't, isn't even better people. So do we really want to, to put one, you know, that as a priority? Because it.
It affects less people.
Toll road.
Even though one of the other roads have.
You're saying you don't have Wichita residents in your ear?
That's right.
Even though one of our other roads may have a smaller traffic count, if they are pretty much all Bel Air, we know they're all Bel Air, compared to, you know, would Oliver being more of a thoroughfare compared to, I mean, I know some people use it, but.
Okay, so, so let's.
I hear what you're saying.
Let's do this. Let's ask, let's have staff send out an email, or at least convenience, we know, obviously, it's going to take a little bit of time, maybe in a short little nut graph about each one, about why, you know, we think this is number two, why this is number three. Obviously, we don't expect every last detail. We trust you. You guys are good at what you do. And then, if any of us, if you could email that out, then if any of us have any, I disagree here and here, we can reply along, continue that, but no, yes, no?
I, I stand.
Don't reply all, just she sends it out individually, reply to her.
So, right, so.
That's why I was asking for clarification.
Yes, so let me clarify now. I think that there's an important fact that it's not, this is never coming back to council for decision. So it's not binding today.
Right now.
Designate Anne or staff, allow staff to make that decision. You can always individually talk to staff about that decision. But Anne is, there's a fine line between designating Anne to make that decision and then designating Anne to collect the votes and essentially vote outside of me. So you don't want to do that. You want to designate Anne, make the decision, and give her your feedback.
I think that's what we're doing, and that way, if anyone has any major objection to what is emailed out, we email her and.
This is not binding action, is it?
No.
No, not, not, not the way you're doing it right now.
Okay. I didn't think of that.
So she's going to send us an email, and we email back if it's okay or not okay?
Right.
Right.
Or, or if, if we have any comments or thoughts we want to share with Anne, we can send those to her. We're not actually approving it, because Anne's going to make the decision. But if we want to have some input after she's already put that together.
I can do that, yeah.
Okay.
Just do what you want to.
All right, then we're going to move on.
So I will get this done tomorrow morning and sent out. If you guys could get back to me by maybe.
If we, if we don't like your list, we'll go back to you otherwise, assume?
Probably like Wednesday evening, Thursday morning would be great. Then we can, is that enough time left?
Well, let's say by Thursday 10 a.m. Let's set a hard deadline for that. That way, send it out, and then it gets 24 hours of it.
Well, as soon as you send mine, I'll send it back.
Okay. All righty, appreciate it, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and of course, Jason just stepped out. Oh, there he is. Let's talk about the Woodlawn project.
All right, well, good evening. Mr. Anglemeyer, the smart guy on this team is dealing with a little bit of an emergency situation on a bridge or a street next to the bridge. Some of the county that's washed out, so he apologizes he can't be here this evening. But I'm here to try to give you a little bit of an update on where things stand. And Anne's gonna correct me where I might get misguided a little bit. But right now, I believe KDOT is reviewing a set of plans. And we've been hearing a little bit of back and forth, a few little questions from them. But I think it's pretty standard and, and as soon as we kind of have information from them, we'll be able to make further, you know, reactions of, of what we may need to address that, that, you know, from their vantage point, what they're seeing. The other thing I just wanted to mention is, part of that is, is construction sequencing. And I, you know, well, that was one of kind of the tricky things with this project is how do we maintain certain directions of access along Woodlawn to the neighborhoods, to the fire station, et cetera, during this whole process. And so generally the, the thing that's going to happen in the first four months is kind of utility related. So water lines and sanitary sewer and, and items like that that don't really cause lane closures. We're not seeing any lane closures. And I think on our schedule, that kind of happens during later in the year. So latter half of next year, kind of working through the winter. Some of the advantage of that, as you recalls, you can't do much paving work anyhow during, during colder months. So strategically, that, that kind of works out well then. And then what will occur is kind of in the next month period, there is, um, there's storm sewer improvements that kind of happen throughout this, I'll just mention that. But, but we're going to start building at that point temporary aprons on certain portions of the road. At, at the far south end, south of Thirty-Ninth Street, which is south of the railroad there. On the, on the east side, there'll be some temporary pavement and that will allow traffic to continue north and south from Thirty-Ninth on back to Thirty-Seventh Street section. North of there, you're only going to be able to move going northbound throughout the process. And that's even going to be that way for the fire station for a brief moment of time because we're going to be constructing a temporary access shoulder or a little more pavement if we needed on the west side, um, kind of out in front of the fire station in there. So we can, we can be, what's going to be occurring is we're going to be building that so we can shift traffic around and start removing portions and constructing portions of the eastern half of Woodlawn as we move forward. And I've got a display of this, I don't know that we need to go into the weeds that far, but there's just, that's kind of, and then, and then what we're going to do that's kind of a unique thing is to get the fire station where they have access back to Woodlawn, the, we're going to go ahead and utilize the frontage road that's there and they will be able to go one way. And we're basically going to have to do something that just allows them only access. We'll have to build a little temporary drive, if you will, along the edge of the lake that's there on the west side. And then they'll peel in and get back on in front of the railroad to be able to, that will be in the emergency service for, for that duration of the project until we do get things going both ways again in the three lane section. So, um, I should mention regarding the fire department, Jay did go and meet with them and discuss the median. And of course, unless you add enough lane, they're not in favor of a median that would interrupt their ability to navigate traffic. You can do what you want, but, but it kind of works out nicely in the three lane road section to not have a median because it allows our traffic to be pushed over so that we can be working on, you know, demoing and building a whole new street section on the other side. Without, without, if you have the median in there, it starts to really limit almost where, to the point where it causes us more expense to do more temporary patching, if you will, to make the project work. So that's kind of the basic nuts and bolts of the, the early part of the process. And eventually we'll get to the point where everything's done for the most part on the west side. And then we'll start moving over, or sorry, to the east side. And then we'll start working on, we'll move traffic back over to the east, start working on the western half generally. There's a few little zigzags in there still. But, um, and then kind of after that is accomplished, kind of in, at the, at the tail end of this, we'll be working on the intersection of Forty-Fifth and Woodlawn, just taking out quadrants of it and shifting traffic around so we can finish up one quadrant to the northeast, move to the northwest, kind of things like that. Budget wise, and please interrupt me if you have any questions anytime through here, if you have anything you want to add in. But budget wise, we appear to be right on track with, with, uh, what we've been telling you. I just kind of highlighted, uh, we've got contingency built into our base prices here. And so we're sending about five point six million for the street improvement. Then of course we have the water in this storm, or the sanitary rather, that's separate kind of at large projects. But if we add another contingency, so if you assume kind of like twenty percent contingency, that does push us up into like six point two million. But just wanted to let you know that appears we're on budget. Uh, the only thing I'd want to mention to that budget, and this is fluid still, but, right now we have still a pretty measly, what I'd call landscape or beautification or amenity kind of, you know, budget. We've got a kind of a hundred thousand plugged in there. Uh, for reference, we are, we just got bids back on a project in South Wichita. It's called Steeple Bay. Uh, the Lang Development Group is doing it. It has splash aqua parks there if anybody had kids or grandkids that have gone there. But, uh, it, it's kind of a half mile of boulevard, street. It has twenty foot lanes, so it's not apples to apples. But, um, the budget for just the landscape, the tree plantings, it does have sod, which we need to discuss how we do certain things or want to do them. But it, just the landscape alone was like three hundred thousand. Now, we had a lot of stuff in medias. And so if you remember when we did the public workshop, we talked a little bit about beautification. And the reason we haven't really started on giving you anything is we, we want to really get kind of the pavement now down the hardscape before we get, we have ideas, we've talked about them, but we don't really want to get into the weeds on that uh, until we really have the pavement set. So, um, but I did want to start to get some feedback related to that because that is going to make a difference on our thinking coming up here on, on what you really want to be able to do. I, you know, I would tell you that we don't need to go crazy on tree sizes or anything like that. I think it's better for you as a city to plant trees that are in that two and a half inch and smaller caliper. If you want to do something special by the park or something, we can. But just maintaining those is a lot easier survivability and such when we go with the kind of two and a half inch and thus.
I think they ought to be Christmas trees.
You need two and a half inch Christmas trees?
Yeah.
Well, as far as the, the median, so are, are we still?
So, so in the current version, there's no, there's no median in the current version except for the, the railroad will require, just like what you're seeing over here on Forty-Fifth down by Hillside.
Okay.
Well, Forty-Seventh has it too. They got a median there at Forty-Seventh.
Yeah, so, and, and it, it won't have any plantings in it necessarily unless you want them. They typically just have a paper or something in the center. That would be the basic.
What's the lane width currently?
So our lane width's, uh, and I'm gonna say high edge to high edge, which means the asphalt portion, the curbs, we don't count in the calculation, but they're twelve foot. So we have kind of twelve foot and then I think the middle's maybe just a hair bit wider because of the curb. So it's like fourteen or fifteen, something like that. And then twelve foot again. On the, on the north part, in the south part, obviously there's five lane with a continuous turn lane in the center.
You said curb to curb and you said no median, so I'm confused.
Okay, sorry. So, um, when you think of a street that has asphalt, there's the curb beyond the concrete portion. The lane width does not include any of that curb. It's just the asphalt.
Right.
So the curb on the outside is two and a half foot from the back to the gutter pan, uh, the far edge, the high edge they call it. And then you have a twelve foot lane and then the center median, I think it's more like one foot nine.
It's a little bit wider.
But we're not gonna have a center median, right?
The center turn lane.
There's a center turn lane.
But there is gonna be, that's correct. There is not gonna be a center median, but there's a center turn lane. And those are generally a little bit wider for safety aspects because since you're pulling into that from the two directions.
Yeah, so like I said, you know, that was the fire department's request. They do have this thing called Appendix D, it has all their rules and stuff in it. You're, you're not necess, as a city, I don't know how it works. And I necessarily obligated to it, but for safety reasons, they, there's a reason why they require twenty feet on, if you were gonna go build Walmart, super center or, you know, QuickTrip, it doesn't matter. You've got to maintain a fire lane that's at least twenty feet, um, when you're a certain distance from a building. So, uh, and as an example, where we've, in like the city of Wichita, um, I think we maybe said, you know, go take a look at, if you want to see a current three lane kind of project in a residential type area, you could go over to a hundred twenty-seventh street, south of Twenty-First and north of Thirteenth. The differences there is they actually have a bike lane that is incorporated with each direction of travel. When you throw that bike lane in there, you're sitting at twenty feet plus. So that's a difference. It even has a center median on that particular street.
Right. Is the twen- twenty foot lane with a median, is that still even feasible for Woodlawn? Or, I forget exactly, it was kind of.
I think we spent.
We were looking at it, but we didn't really.
We spent like a million, something extra when we, if we went to five lane, the whole distance.
It's extra costs. But it, it still would be, it would be feasible at this point that MKEC has done enough work that there would probably be some extra design costs to make that change at this point.
So basically, if we wanted to have medians at this point, we would need to have wider roads than we previously planned. And if we wanted to keep ourselves aligned with the fire code.
Probably, it'd probably be, yeah, you, they'd get pretty grumpy, I'm sure. I, I don't know what they could do to you, but they are your neighbors.
We'd have, we'd have to be at the width of the bike lane.
The, the key takeaway from this is Jay had not talked to the fire department before the medians went in, although it was mentioned very early on that they typically like the twenty feet. And we thought we might be able to get around that.
I guess my, my one question is, is, I mean, because obviously they don't have a lot to say with the median that goes along the railroad tracks that's required. But what about just having that one small section of median for the pedestrian crossing to have like the, you know, the.
Okay, so you, you could, you could definitely add in a small section. I don't think they're gonna get bent out of shape at all on small segments. From a cost perspective, you know, if, if in the future you could, you could already have that piece in there and, and it could be something. It is, the road is short enough now that from our standpoint, it's not, it's not as necessarily as, you know, you, you, it's easier to get across, you don't have as far to get. So you don't necessarily need it from a cost standpoint. If you still want to have something like that, it could still fit in there and it could be shorter.
It also seemed like the last time we looked at the, the, those various crossing options, the crossing signal.
Yes.
Looked like those made the prospect of what we originally talked about not, not necessary. It looked like the new, those other signaling options would create a situation where a pedestrian would be able to move across and not have to worry about stopping halfway, that that kind of went away. That was my takeaway from that.
Yeah, it's got timing built into it where you should be able to get across. I mean, that's.
Because it's stopping traffic. It's not like making halfway and then getting in the other.
Sure.
And that's definitely something that could be added or revised in the future when we do expand it out to a five lane.
Sure.
Yeah, and keep in mind, you, I don't know how likely it is that you'd want to do it, but you could always build pavement out when you go to five lanes if you really want a median.
It would be a, it'd be, it's a, it's a very limited extent.
That's right, we don't have.
So it would be fairly, fairly simple and not too much extra cost.
Right.
Okay, so whereas before we thought we were gonna have a decision on medians, it sounds like that's not a real decision anymore.
It's kind of the takeaway.
So.
Unless, yeah, unless we.
But, but we were all concerned about making sure the fire trucks had the appropriate access. And so I think it's good that we have a definitive answer on that.
And I do appreciate you guys looking into that because that was one of those things we wanted.
And again, it, it, it does help us make the construction sequencing work so we can keep traffic moving and build the road. Uh, it does make a big difference in that. So as big of advocate as I am for the median, it kind of dawned on me, the only way to really make it work is either you have to pull the trigger and do wider lanes or, or, you know, at that point we may just like, well, maybe we just do the whole, the whole thing. So, um, that's kind of been my takeaway through.
And the beauti- and the beautification.
Yeah, now, you know, I still would say, you go to five lane and you all know this. And this is, once again, just, I'll tell you my personal opinion. That, that median makes a huge difference in the way a street feels when you start getting out there to five lanes. I mean, if you go drive Twenty-First Street east to Andover, it's like, if those guys don't accidentally land a seven forty-seven on that.
I gotta use my cruise control on that road. I do.
So, um, I would still encourage us as a city to, you know, think about that when the opportunity comes. I, I think you should, and maybe there is a small spot. Maybe, maybe there's a spot that we could just pick on, like the crosswalk or something, if it makes sense. That would, I think, be easy if it's limited length. So it might be a nice gesture.
Yeah, well, and I think there's a lot of, a lot of option, opportunities to put a little bit of beautification along with the walkways and stuff.
And that's where I kind of wanted to go. So you have a lot of options off to the edge. I know, um, we've mentioned, um, kind of water harvesting and rain harvesting. There's, it's really up to you kind of on the next step on how, um, aggressive you want to be or how, you know, it, it's going to, anytime you do something that's above the normal, it is going to cause extra cost probably. It's going to cause a little extra maintenance perhaps. Um, you may save and a lot of other things. It may be, it may be doing some really good things, like you may not need to, you know, I brought some pictures. And you've seen this before. And, uh, but, you know, if you go with, uh, with something, let's say that's on the side, it kind of looks like that. And you squeeze in landscape like that in certain areas, then, you know, not necessarily, it's going to take so, especially in the early end, a little more effort to accomplish that. And then is that what you want to see? I mean, that's, it's going to be more wild. Um, if you try to make it nice and perfect, you're gonna spend lots of maintenance trying to keep it nice and perfect. But if you let it be a little bit wild, we use native plants, you can accomplish things like this.
And still get that splash of color and that.
Yeah, and it's more a textural thing, I'd say, Mayor. It's, it's, in, in our area, I would strongly suggest you, you concentrate on the grasses and things like that because the flowers only last for a short time and we can get into all that detail. Some other things will work really well though, and, and this, pretend that this doesn't have as much hardscape. And in both of these scenarios, there's ways for us to route some of the water from the curbs into these depressions and still have ways to pick up this water behind it. But these things are all going to cost you a little bit more to do initially. They may have some savings in the future, but they're hard to, to, you know, they're the things I kind of told you about. They're more, almost feel good sort of things. And they, they do help, but they're gonna be, I think, somewhat small in scale. But you do have opportunities to, to do some of this occasionally or in, in great portions and especially in front of the park. Uh, we've talked, there's big opportunities in front of the park to remove that one section of the frontage road and really start to make a nice front door to the park. So, and then of course by the lake, sorry.
So where you are in the design stage, these are still opportunities.
These are opportunities. I'm just, I wanted to just make sure that you understood that right now you would need to, we need to prioritize in your budget and your thinking. How much are you willing to go out and spend? Because, um, we have a hundred thousand in there now. I don't know if I ever told you the number, yeah, three hundred thousand for just landscape. We, we would have done something kind of like this in our median. So we have a half mile of it, if you will. It's not continuous, it's got breaks and stuff in the median, but it's, it's very. It's not continuous. It's got breaks and stuff in the median, but it's, it's very expensive when you, when you start putting in live plant material. I would probably not steer you towards trying to do something with seed in an area like this because it's going to, it will frustrate you probably and frustrate the citizens because.
As far as the design though, I think it's important to, to think about the future also as far as the widening. Obviously, we don't wanna spend a bunch of money putting, you know, something beautiful in that we're gonna, you know, 10, 15 years, even 20 years down the road, we're just gonna have to take it all out anyway and push it, so.
Yeah, and then what I guess I should say is, you, you would probably wanna try to work something like this into where it's, it's back beyond. Cause I think we're, we're going to set the sidewalks and everything like it would still accommodate the.
Yeah, the five lane.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think in front of the, like you said, in front of the park and in front of the lake are, are the big opportunity areas.
Yeah, and maybe you can help us think a little bit about, you know, as we consider these different options, what the impact will be on staff and public works to take care of them and what that'll look like from a cost perspective. Cause I think we've gotta be really mindful, not just of the initial cost, but of what the ongoing cost is and make sure we're a resource to take care of whatever we put in there.
Right.
You, you.
Hope you don't have to mow.
Well, that's.
Yeah, honestly, that's.
There's a trade-off. There's a trade-off. I mean, well, Jeff knows. I don't spend very much time mowing a, you know, like walking around.
No, I like, I like, I mean, if, if we have an opportunity to put in something like prairie grasses.
Yes.
That, that, that is lower maintenance than mowing the lawn type of look, I, I, you know, I'd like to look at that, definitely.
Right, and Prairie Star Parkway, I think I mentioned that one to you, if you're over up in the Kansas City area, over in the next, go up there. All they did was plant prairie grasses. And they, I mean, they can mow them, but they did plant a lot of live plant material. And what we can, what we've also done sometimes is, we can take buffalo sod and plant buffalo sod and then within that, we can, we can spread the seed for a little variety of a little bit taller stuff. We don't want anything big and tall, but we can definitely put seed right on top of it. Cause I think that will be one of our options that we should consider. That's what we do on most projects elsewhere in the metro areas, is a buffalo sod if it's not gonna be irrigated.
Do you have any pictures of buffalo sod?
Not with me, I do not, but it, you know, I'll tell you this. If you want it to look like perfect grass, like a fescue lawn, it's, it's, you gotta have someone that's really kinda got it down if you wanna try to keep broadleafs out of it. But if you go with something that's more like this, it'd be way easier. And I would, I would mention, as an example, if you all would go look at, what's our park over here at Oliver and.
Alley Park.
Yes, Alley Park. That, that one is a buffalo, we, we seeded that 15 years ago, or whatever it's been by now. And there's a lot of little flowers and things like that will pop up in there and it, it can look pretty attractive at certain times.
Just don't make it look like the hill over there.
Oh, man, they gotta mow that more. I just, you know, you can really make that look good. They just haven't mowed it enough.
It's not my idea of wildflowers.
So, yeah, they just, you have to, you have to be very diligent and getting.
Cause it'll take over.
Well, just, you just get weeds for a while. I mean, eventually we'll get there, but it could be a long time.
Oh, it's probably been a long time.
Yeah, if you mow it, you can get there much faster.
Pete did that, didn't he?
Yeah.
So we'll definitely have some more conversation before the first bulldozer arrives, but.
Yes.
Looking forward to it. I do appreciate the update. Any other questions that we?
I still think you need to leave the media's blank for a while and just put fake Christmas trees out there at Christmas time.
And we can have a contest.
Have little kids come decorate them.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Guzman, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Next, we're gonna move on. Spent a lot of time talking about roads today at this workshop. The K254, KDOT priorities. Before we talk about this, I just wanna share that two weeks ago, Ty and I met with a couple of developers looking at a big chunk. And that was one of the big things they asked about when we talked, when we mentioned, hey, coming up real, real soon is the priority off of K254 and getting that. So it's a big, it's big towards economic development. And developers are asking those questions too. So have a, you know, option here. You know, we, we do have, you know, there's Oliver and Woodlawn, and then we have, you know, Rock and Webb and Greenwich and different options. So turn it over to kinda Jeff and Ty who've sat on that task force.
So with a little history is, you know, of course, we've got a new governor. New governor comes the new Secretary of Transportation and the old, what's that, T-Works program that they had, you know, tenure program that was done probably 12 years ago now expired. So this new secretary is looking at basically what WAMPO is doing. Okay, what are we gonna do for state highways over the next 10 years? And so they've been going across the state in different regions and asking stakeholders, cities, individuals, what do you think we need to be spending our money on? Again, these are state projects, not our projects. So South Central Kansas through the Wichita area Chamber of Commerce created this transportation coalition. And that's where this map came from. And so the idea is that there's strength in numbers and if people agree on priorities, then those get moved to the top. And so obviously, everyone is agreeing that the North Junction should be their top priority. And Wichita and Central County is putting funding in it. They understand that at KDOT and they're trying to move that project forward. But then they also wanna know, well, what other projects? Besides the North Junction over the next 10 years, do we need to be focusing on? So you can see that K254 is on there and that's something the association has pressed for. At last year, when they started the whole process to, to get this new transportation plan in place and they were asking for what those projects needed to be, Jeff went and to a legislative, not a hearing, but a fact-finding meeting and the mayor was there as well. It was in Wichita. And that's what got 254 on their radar. Now, the next piece is over the next two months, they're going to be, the, the KDOT's going back out again and saying, okay, so South Central Kansas, you've got all of these different priorities on here. What, what are the specific projects that you, you know, you say 254, but what does that mean? And so the first thing that everybody is gonna say is, our priority is the North Junction. And I, I think we would all agree that is important for Bel Air, cause most of us use that, if not daily. Our citizens are using that to get downtown and different places around. So, and, and we border 254. So what I did is I asked Ann and the chief to go actually drive 254 that borders Bel Air, that touches Bel Air and give me and your thoughts of what, what should happen along there. So this is where this name, or this is where this list came from, not asking you to prioritize anything, but I wanted to throw it out and get your input. Is this, does this sound correct or do you think we need to do something different? The big question that really you need to answer tonight is that KDOT is looking at, and they've talked about it, another interchange. Right now, their discussions have been at Greenwich. So our question, the question for you is, do you still think that's appropriate or do you think it should be at Webb? They do have a policy that they don't want them every mile. So there is one at Woodlawn, so Rock is out. So it would have to be either Webb or Greenwich. From the county standpoint, I think they would lean towards Greenwich because Greenwich goes north. It's a county road goes north clear up into Newton. Webb, you know, it turns the gravel on the north. From our standpoint, Webb is a four-lane. We've got a lot of development going along there. So we could make the argument that it's a four-lane that, that pours into 254, a major highway, and something needs to be done there and maybe not Greenwich. And so that's where we've kinda threw in the idea of, so if we're gonna do a interchange at Webb, then we would look at doing frontage roads between Rock and Webb and then Greenwich and Webb to get the traffic to those. So I, the, the question that, that I need for, or answered from you all would be, where do you think that interchange needs to be? Because the mayor and Jeff will both, will, will be representing Bel Air on K254 and the city going to the legislature when they're here in, I believe it's November, giving your suggestions. And so.
Wichita way has the most accidents, Greenwich or Webb?
I think Webb right now.
I would say, if you look at 254, the state statistics say the most accidents happen in front of the Walmart in El Dorado.
Apples and oranges there.
But along there, yeah, and I'm gonna lean toward, towards Webb for all the reasons that our city managers pointed out. The economic development alone, it does stink that that's gravel on the other side, but I, I lean back towards. And I don't think, it's not just the economic development for our city, but you also look at, you know, the WSU is pouring millions out there into that AV8 and into that technical college. And you've got all the medical facilities that connect to K96. Again, I go back to the tour that, that Ty and I gave on Wednesday and we really showed that here is the sandwich, the opportunity in between K96 and 254. And it was basically all Webb. The conversation kept going back towards Webb, having access off of that.
Did you, did you talk to County Commissioner, God, Lord, about Furley?
Yeah.
About what they're, what the plans were? I know, cause he said something about development out there, but.
Yeah, I have not, no, I didn't reach out to him on that. I forgot about that.
Um, here's kinda my thoughts on it and I'm gonna share it with, with y'all. And, you know, the entire road at some point needs to be turned freeway. I mean, the, the state's plan to take a two-lane road, a four-lane road to freeway is you take the two-lane road, you add two more lanes. It's all separated with not limited access. And then they're supposed to go back with traffic studies, with accident studies for safety and then fix it to be a freeway like 35 is, like, you know, cause at one point, 35, you know, didn't, didn't have overpasses everywhere. Kellogg certainly didn't have overpasses. Took you 45 minutes to get from one side of town to the other, cause all those stoplights. But I think that if we, you know, if we truly want to, to turn this into a limited access freeway like it should be and, and, and once North Junction is finished, I mean, the, the, the traffic is going to increase. It's, it's, it's gonna become even more a major corridor from, from freight-wise, from, from El Dorado with the, the turnpike and then cause getting anywhere from north, North Wichita or West Wichita, that's the fastest route. I think we should shut down Rock completely and not have access there. I think, I think if you, if you keep access even turning, I think it, it still is, is too much. Especially when you, when you talk about high school being there with, with a little bit, you know, less, less.
Experience?
Experience, thank you. Man, this is Tuesday. Less experienced drivers turning in on that. You know, I think overpass at Webb makes sense economically, both for Bel Air and Kechai. I mean, because Kechai doesn't go to Greenwich. Bel Air doesn't go to Greenwich. So if you, if you put that there, you're not getting the full benefit that you can. I mean, is the county really, you know, gonna be as aggressive as the cities could be for, for the economic part of it? You know, I think that's something we could throw to them too. And then you put the frontage roads and you put a frontage road along with a major highway. I mean, you can, there's, there's infinite amounts of, of places like that all across America now that, you know, businesses are just lined up on that frontage road. And, you know, I, I've, I told the KDOT people, I said, yeah, we shut it off. If anybody's got a problem with it, I'll go talk to them. I got no problem with that because, because I, because I know that the, you know, that, that the people who have lost, you know, loved ones on that road don't really care if they're inconvenienced a little bit. I mean, because they're, you know, they're more than inconvenienced the rest of their life. So, you know, in that, in that fact, I think if we truly wanna show the, the state that we are serious about this being a limited access freeway, I think the plan to shut Rock Road down completely, it, it would be the best idea.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Anyway, I believe.
And that would be a good way to too, if they're saying, oh, you all want just Bel Air. No, look, we're, we're saying Rock Road too, which is all Bel Air. In exchange, I'm sorry, Jim, you've been trying to say something for.
Well, I just think that that's the right thing to do. You need to have that interchange right. It makes the most sense. I understand maybe some of the folks in the county are thinking Greenwich, Greenwich because, or Greenwich because of its continuation, but that's because they don't live out here. You know, and they're looking at a map and they, the ones that live out here know what's going on and how, how, how it's developing. And, and you're not gonna see that group out there gonna wait for a while.
Right. To me, Greenwich is more of the road to nowhere, more of the commerce park type traffic as opposed to that. I mean, that's what I see there. So we've had, you know, Jim and myself both have said Webb. You said Webb. Okay, and Betty, which way are you leaning, whether Greenwich or Webb case?
Webb. Yeah, I think we can't make the case for Greenwich, so it's gotta be Webb.
Yep, it is. Easy peasy.
Do, do we need a letter to somebody on this?
Well, part of this is.
No, so what, this is the same thing. So the South Central Transportation Coalition just wanted the list from us. What, what we think that touches Bel Air, what we think needs to be done. So the big one was, you know, because KDOT has talked about an interchange. It's just where. And so with the city saying, we think it really needs to be Webb. And so that's important. And then if you were comfortable, you know, we addressed all the other roads. I mean, at this point, at some point, if you, if you do a, there's some simple things like D cell and XL lanes would help. You know, now when an interchange goes in, then yeah, you would look at closing Rock and then doing things like that.
This is, this is kinda the same way as, as we just were kinda talking about our priority list for, for WAMPO. You know, this entire road, there's, there's priority lists included and, and all the stakeholders from, you know, Butler, Cedric County, all the towns along the road kinda have their own say. You know, obviously, the, the, there's, there's about four intersections that are the really dangerous intersections that are kinda everybody's top priority, I think the intersections are. You know, when we started this, it was, it was about safety along with economic development. I mean, everybody knows that you put in an intersection, it's gonna spur economic development when, when you have safe access on and off. You know, for Bel Air, I think, you know, it's pretty easy for us to say the top priority for Bel Air is that intersection. I think Kechai is probably on the same, same page, you know, Cedric and Butler County. You know, they, obviously, Towanda probably, you know, Ohio Street is probably their number one, just because it affects them. Benton, the Benton Road is their, their, you know, there's probably about five interchanges. Along the way, there, there's also, you know, some other things, some arcades turns that on, on a couple of county roads that it's a long way from the interchanges. You can have a right turn only, the, you kinda U-turn safety thing in the middle, which would go along with the whole freeway concept, because there, there are spots that there's, the median's big enough to do that, so. So basically, I know there's a, a big, I mean, there's, there's a, a big list of projects along this road to complete it. But, you know, it's not gonna all happen at once. So that's why, you know, as far as the city goes, you know, we need to kinda turn in what our priority is as a stakeholder into the 254 Corridor Association, so.
So with the consensus tonight, you know, Jeff and I'll be testifying in November again, between the, the joint sessions again with the House and Senate members like we did previously. But do we need an action on the next agenda? So it's all, it's a unanimous vote?
Yeah, so, cause it's, this is similar to what we're doing with WAMPO is need to, so like Jeff was saying, I've, I've already sent out a, an email to, from the, the K254 Corridor Association for them to send in all of theirs. So, you know, Towanda, Benton, everybody, Butler County, Cedric County can send in what they're. So the association, which Jeff, Jeff will represent, will have a list of things. And then of course, the mayor will represent Bel Air and say, you know, we, we think the North Junction is important. We support K254 improvements. And in fact, these are the ones that we think are very important for 254. So, yeah, so right now, all I need to do is make sure that we get all of these in to the coalition and to 254, that they can do their ranking and stuff, which they will. and to two fifty-four, that they can do their ranking and stuff, which they will rank their projects. Uh, the association will also, or the coalition will rank their projects, but that doesn't leave any stakeholder like a city, which is what the mayor will go and say, these are specific that we really support.
Cause this is, this is also the, the South Central Kansas Coalition. I mean, so it's, which is made up of all the cities and counties.
Strength in numbers.
Yeah. Basically, we want them to stop giving so much damn money to Johnson County.
I also wanna say, I think, uh, your two option ones are really where we should go. And I would, I would suggest, although I don't want to be the designer, I suggest that the Webb Road interchange be a diamond interchange. It seems like that would make the most sense. I don't care whether Webb goes over or, or the freeway goes over. That doesn't matter to me. I, I just a diamond interchange would make more sense. I'm not real fond of the one twenty-seventh street issue, but I understand also that that's getting out there where the traffic is lessened. So because, and my, my reason I'm not excited about is because it has people crossing the freeway, the, the highway and it's just, anytime you can avoid that, I'd like to avoid that. So I'm not real fond of that kind of a thing.
It's, um, travel road both ways, isn't it, one hundred twenty-seventh?
Yeah. And maybe what we can do is kind of put some caveats that if an interchange goes in at Webb, then maybe, uh, Rock and Greenwich could be closed. Like you said, maybe even, it's even one hundred twenty-seventh, uh, too.
Where those people.
An interchange would make a big difference on.
Oh, yes.
Yep.
Make a world of difference.
And, and so maybe the thought is that some of these options for XL and D cell are not real expensive, um, compared to interchange in roads and those would be short-term fixes. And then when the interchange went in, then we'd look at traffic improvements on all of them at that point. So.
All right. Okay, perfect. So we'll move on with that. It sounds like we had a consensus there. So invite our city attorney up. We're gonna talk about city codes. Uh, the two items, uh, we wanna talk about backflow prevention. We brought that up at our last meeting. Before that, we wanna talk about swearing in dates. And the reason why this came up is, you know, we have an election in November and then the way it's written is we're then seated in January. So that could leave, you know, you hear the whole lane duck or whatever.
Line duck.
You know, are we okay with that if, if that were to occur? Um, so Jackie, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you're exactly right. Um, the election on, occurs on November fifth. It usually takes the, um, election commission a couple of weeks to certify the election. So I wouldn't recommend putting it that very next week after the election or the week after that, because if you ever have a close race, that's gonna be.
Recount.
Yeah. So, and if it's on Nat, a year where we have a national race, it just sometimes might take longer. So that puts us into the fourth week in November, cause first November, second and third are out. That fourth week is usually around the holidays. So really don't recommend that. The holiday does fall on a Thursday. You could do it the Thursday, the fourth Thursday in November, or the fourth Tuesday in November. That's something to think about. Um, the first date that I see as, as probably feasible is that first Tuesday in December. That's the third, it's early, uh, this year it's on the third, but it would be perpetually that first Tuesday in November. Um, the second Tuesday, I'm sorry, that first Tuesday in December. The second Tuesday in December is also an option that could work. As you get into the third and fourth Tuesday, you start getting into holiday travel and things like that as well, which eliminates, which then, um, the next available week is the Tuesday that we have after the first Monday in December. That's where we are now. So.
So I guess our question is, do we wanna move it up or do we wanna leave it alone? And if we wanna move it up.
Right.
Which date, first or third and Tuesday, do we wanna do it in December?
I think December, the third.
Just to clarify, the bill requires the start date to be on or after December first. Is that applicable to us?
Hmm. And we're only talking December anyway because of all the.
Well, I understand, but, but, but so you couldn't do it in November. You don't even have the option to do it in November.
Right.
I was thinking first Tuesday in December.
And I said the first Tuesday.
Me too.
First Tuesday in December.
Yeah, we should change it. It should be the first regular meeting in December.
That way that does give one meeting if there is someone who loses, who's here to say goodbye.
I think that lands nicely between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Yep. And it's usually kind of a slow time here. You're up for January. Okay.
All right. And now that, there's one more thing I want you to think about. That was really quick. One more thing I wanted you to think about. At the end of the year, we typically, um, may handle any recodification. So all the ordinances passed throughout the year would be incorporated into our code. Uh, we handle zoning updates and any kind of like, here's what we did this year in review and just affirm any of those, um, documents. I don't think moving your, your, uh, having your new council or whoever takes seat in that, on that first Tuesday in December would affect that, but I wanted you to think about it, whether you'd like to see the council that had been in session that whole year finish out all the form at the end of your documents.
Well, let me ask you, it, could we do the swearing in at the end of the meeting?
At the end of that first Tuesday in December?
That way you allow the council to go out, you know, if someone is, well, we know, you know, Betty is not seeking reelection. Um, you know, there's two of us here who are, who could possibly be replaced. If that, you know, that would give a chance to, if that were to happen, you know, say goodbye, wrap, you know, wrap up with voting on the codifications and everything and kind of transitioning maybe right.
Wouldn't that be under old business? An old business is taken care of before the council leaves their seats.
Well, the formal swearing in can be done outside of a meeting. It doesn't have to be within the, the, the formal bounds.
No, I meant the codification and stuff.
Oh, yeah. No, that would be, um, that would be in ordinances and resolutions.
That's still under old business, isn't it?
Hmm. I'm not really sure where that falls on.
No, we don't have anything in our codes about old or new business. So in fact, the way that our, our agenda is set up is the way it reads in the, the codes. So there isn't anything about old or new business. So.
I, I actually like Mayor, uh, Mayor's suggestion there about that. Cause have a meeting, clean up those things and.
I'm out here.
Sorry, Betty, you're staying.
The third meeting in November would also kind of be the same as that, right? Because it would be after the election has taken place.
You could do it then. You could do the codification stuff with it in.
So I don't know if that's possible. If we had any concerns about wanting the old council to, you know, finish anything up before their last meeting, it could be handled that last meeting in November, um, just to remove any concerns about the first meeting in December.
Right, right. And the codification again is not a fixed thing. It's just something that sometimes, some years we'll get it done earlier and some years we'll get it done later, just depending on other, like the year we did tier averting, we waited because we had some other moving pieces that we wanted to incorporate. So it's something to keep in mind. We could absolutely try to keep in mind getting that done earlier. So that way, knowing that the new council would take seat the first, uh, meeting in December.
Right. Because if we did it, you know, after the meeting, you know, on that first Tuesday in December, that'd be two meetings between the election and, you know, the swearing in versus just the one that would already kind of naturally be there in November. So.
So it sounds.
I'm not super passionate either way about that, but.
So I'm out the third, right.
At the end of the meeting.
Only if we pass an ordinance sometime between now and then.
Yeah.
For what?
Otherwise, you're still here until January.
I would suggest that we keep that, knowing that the swearing in will happen at the end of the meeting, just keep that, uh, swearing in general and say no later than the, uh, first meeting in December. Then have a policy of swearing in after that meeting. So that way you don't have that in the coup that it has to happen after the first meeting.
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's smart.
Well, can't we do it in November?
Legally, no.
See those words right there?
And while we're at it, how come the Bel Air mayor is elected every two years, but all the other cities are four years asking for a friend?
That's a good question. I can find that lie out.
That's the way it was set up in nineteen eighty.
There are some other cities that are, that are longer. And maybe in nineteen eighty, our classification was different.
Yeah, cause we weren't a city of the second class. We're saying, I mean, I talked to other mayors, like, again, what you just, I'm like, yep, every two years and.
Yeah. That's why, because Mr. Brookhauser didn't wanna run more than two years.
So.
Because he was teaching, he was still teaching school.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that sounds like.
See, I've worked with every mayor so.
Okay.
Recommend at your next meeting, um, an update to a charter ordinance that would make, uh, the new council get sworn in on, at the end, at the first meeting in December.
And I can.
All righty. And then you wanna talk about back, little, uh, backflow prevention?
Yes. So I gave my report on this, um, to council of the last meeting. Uh, council requested we go back and we try to find some ways to make this work better. Um, staff is recommending that backflow preventers be due on June first or June fifteen. It really doesn't matter which one because the April first date is just the weather is still unpredictable and, you know, people can have freezing happen. So you would, if the report were turned into City Hall on April first, that means sometime in March, that preventer would have been inspected. And March is even more unpredictable. So staff is recommending June first to June fifteenth.
Okay, I got a problem. I've been getting phone calls on these, uh, like sprinkler letters. Some people do them in March, some do it at the end of summer because they were never told. And one lady said, I don't even understand this letter. Well, then after she wrote it to me over the phone, I thought, I don't understand it either. But some, uh, plumbers or whoever does the sprinkler things does it right at, you know, the end of February or March.
Right.
And then some people, they do, they do them at the end of summer.
Right.
When they shut them off. So.
We looked at.
Do we have a policy that they have to do it? What, cause I think, didn't you say?
By April first is what our policy says.
Is it April first?
By, by each April first. And that's why we're talking about changing it is because if you do it in April first, that means your sprinklers have to be on and your backflow is actually above ground. And so.
It has to be certified.
Right. So in the worst case, it's gonna freeze and then your backflow may even be bad after, you know, it freezes.
That's what happened to one lady. Her, she did it early and it froze and busted and she said she had a two hundred and fifty dollar water bill.
Right.
Yeah, that's what happened to me. So I, I had an irrigation system put in in twenty fourteen and I've had it serviced by the company that installed it ever since. And I get the certification certificate every year, every spring when they turn it on. But I didn't know that I was responsible as a homeowner to send that to the city and pay the fee. I didn't know that. I just assumed when I got the certificate, it was telling me, hey, they got it certified by the city.
Right.
And so I called, cause I called them this week and asked, uh, haven't you been sending these to the city? And they're like, no, you're supposed to. Like, okay, my, my, my bad. I didn't know that.
He does that for me.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Was that when you said, I'll, I'll call someone on the city council?
She didn't know what to do.
Okay, so.
She said, I'm in violation. I've been handling this thing.
Yeah.
And I said, well, I'm not real sure about to call the city.
Yeah. So to answer that, we, you all just answered it. Uh, Stephanie thought it'd be better to leave it to the contractors' practices. Some prefer to turn it in for you. Some will give it for a lower price. You could turn it in yourself. And so it's just, it'd be hard to wrangle contractors and make them all turn them in. So that's, that's one thing that she thought was, was probably something she'd recommend leaving as is.
Yeah.
And now that we're doing.
That didn't say that in that letter.
Right. But this year, Stephanie's doing a lot to educate people. So I'm pretty confident that within the next year, more contractors and citizens will know. It's, it's.
No, I'm glad I got the letter, cause now I know.
I hope that she was supposed to turn it in.
Right. So this year, she can call Stephanie. She'll sit down with her and go through the details of that. It's just, we have had a few years where we kind of set that expectation without, you know, putting out a lot of education.
A lot of people, so we're catching up. Get them inspected if you wanna know it.
And if I can, I'm sorry, if I can address that before we move on, I'm sorry. You're saying a lot of people don't get them inspected. Well, something else that, um, Stephanie, that I didn't include in my report that's really important is that if people do not have, people who do not use their sprinkler system, so their sprinkler systems haven't been in service for years, they can request, um, their backflow preventer have like a final sort of inspection and then it would be taken off our list of, of.
I didn't say that in my letter either.
Exactly. So there are quite a few people who fall in that category who don't use it.
People don't understand. I guess that's why I'm getting a phone call. That's why I'm leaving them.
Well, yeah, I know a lot of people, you know, I've heard from folks that haven't used their sprinkler system in years and got this letter. And it feels like maybe we should have an option for folks to, you know, send in a form that says, you know, I certify that this is not connected to the, was the water. I, I haven't used it and I won't use it until, you know, I turn it on. So I think it'd be, you know, for us to provide some sort of self, even self-certification method and affidavit that, you know, I'm not going to use it. I haven't used it, um, and I won't use it unless I start getting it inspected again.
I think that makes more sense.
I moved in, I moved in in two thousand two and I haven't ran it since two thousand three. I mean, it's, it's been sixteen years since I've ran it. I mean, I'm sure if I was running now, I'd need a complete, complete, just, you know, redo.
And the waters, I'm sure shut off to it out at the meter.
Absolutely.
And you put the valve that they turned off when it was winterized.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's what happened with mine. Mine actually busted and I opted not to get it replaced. So I technically have a sprinkler, but it's disconnected. It's.
I'd rather conserve the water than, than water anyway. I mean, I think too many people water waste resources.
Well, because of the KDHNE kind of standards, just following this thread, because of that KDHNE standard, we can't allow people to self-certify. We can, and, and Keith is working with everyone who falls in this group, we can go in and do some sort of test and make sure they're off the system and then take them off the list from then going forward. But because it's, it's, you know, you can sell, you can say you're not connected to our water system, but do you really know what that means? Some people I wouldn't know.
Well, just like in putting their, uh, water into the sewer line.
The sump pumps.
There are sump pumps into the sewer line, right.
Sanitary, yeah.
I wouldn't want somebody coming in my house and going in the basement and see if I'm hooked into the sump pump. I don't think that's any of their business. I paid for the water, you know? But I know I can't do.
So, so Jackie, you're saying we don't have a legal option to say that folks can sign an affidavit saying that their, that their system was, you know, winterized by a licensed contractor and that it, they haven't had it turned back on?
Um, KD, for our KDHNE, I can defer to Ann. KDHNE is gonna want that inspected by a licensed contractor. I don't.
Is it a legal requirement?
Yeah, a legal requirement though.
Or just a desire?
We have an obligation to ensure that everything has been properly disconnected because we have an obligation to protect our water supply. We need to make sure and as a city be able to certify that yes, this resident A has take, has completely disconnected their sprinkler system from our water supply. So if they want, if somebody, if resident A wants to send in a form that says it's been disconnected, we need to make sure that Keith or somebody else follows up and verifies that it has been disconnected. And then that's kind of where Jackie's trying to get at. And I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
But we need to have that. As a city, we have a responsibility.
Right. And I, I understand that. And, you know, there's a reason that this policy here, we don't want our water, you know, contaminated by any sort of means, but there's gotta be, you know, a reasonableness as well to what the city's obligation can be because somebody can have it disconnected and hook it back up themselves if we want. And there's no way, unless the city's gonna go around and every month inspect everyone's uh, sprinkler system, you know, there's only so much that a city can be obligated to.
Right.
And so what's reasonable there, there's a reasonable expectation.
So I think the way that, because of the staffing and other things, just when KDHNE does come down and do their audits or inspections, it's helpful to have all those, you know, uh, preventer reports included. So that's one thing I would say that's been working. Um, we can look at some other ways to do it.
Yeah.
I, I would not recommend self-certification because I don't have a minimum standard of the certifier. That, that's just kind of my.
Okay. It's very objective at that point, too.
But Jackie, I could tell you from working in the water department, there's a lot of smart people in Bel Air and they will have, they will have you come out and, oh, yeah, it's off. And you check it, it's off. Watch it. They'll turn it back on.
Which is what you're kind of pointing to.
Right. And so, you know, to a certain point, there's, there's only so much you can do. And if you catch somebody doing that, you can have a penalty for it. And that's how you disincentivize it is you have a, a penalty for people getting caught doing that.
So, especially with this new system we're, we're putting in for, for water bills and everything, it's all going to be computerized. Wouldn't, wouldn't that be able to catch anomalies? I mean, basically, if you're going from, from A, water use in March to B, water use in June, July, August, and it's three times, yet they certified that the sprinklers not on. I mean, there's something wrong.
Right. How much?
But, but again.
How many cops gets their home?
That takes me to the point of, of can, can that system itself help us determine if there's a leak somewhere in, in the system anyway? I mean, you know, I've heard stories of, of a leak being anywhere from the city side to the homeowner's side. And a six hundred dollar water bill comes and it's like, well, I had no idea. I mean.
What happens if they use two or three water hoses?
The, the issue is back to staffing. How, you know, because all our computer systems do is they read the meter and then create the bill. So, we would have to look through.
Would there, would there be a way, I'm sure there'd be a way to, to have it coded to, you know, basically go, okay, this is four times the normal water use. Is there a problem? I mean, because most people's bills don't.
Yeah. You can create a dashboard with, based on, you know, your.
Could you serve like that?
Welcome, join the party. That is perfectly reasonable and our current system does have the capability to flag excessive water use. But it takes staff time to be able to pull those reports and review it to look at those flags. And we don't always have that staff time every month. Now that we have the extra person in the utility department, I believe they're going through and doing some of that, but it's not.
Well, I didn't know if the new, the new system that we're getting would be even more.
The new system probably, it, and I'm not as familiar with it as Ted is, but it does, it will have that capability as well. But once again, the computer system just pulled data. It needs to have a person to go and review that.
What about if they're using enough water? I was up here three nights in a row, nine hundred gallons, nine hundred gallons, nine hundred gallons.
And it, it, it doesn't always catch everything.
I've never used nine hundred gallons.
Well, I think your point is really good, Jeff, because if we have something like that where it can, you know, flag it, if we've got somebody that said, yep, my water's turned off, my sprink, to the sprinklers, I'm not running them, they're not being used. But we, we get something like this, well, you can sit outside and, you know, watch, did the sprinklers come on? And if so, then you've got something, uh, from an enforcement perspective to provide that, that negative incentive against that.
Right. And that's certainly something that our enforcement officers start kind of assisting with.
Come look at my lawn.
You can't do that, but you can only use so much.
Me either. I get it from my, my dogs are flooded.
So, I, I mean, I think we should be looking at some, some options to make this process better for our homeowners, especially folks like Jeff who haven't used their sprinkler system in years and haven't, you know, you know that that water's disconnected. He should, probably shouldn't have to go pay, you know, a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars for a plumber to come do something to his system that could, you know, maybe easily be undone, in my opinion. I think that's, uh, not, not something that we.
Any other consensus? We want to move from March to summer month.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah. I actually like the November first recommendation personally.
Well, I, I thought that the June recommendation made more sense because right after the wind. And that's when you're most likely to have bust.
You could possibly have freezing in November.
Right.
That's true. So, you, you could do it anytime before November, if you select November. So, then you'd catch the, did the spring winterization or the spring turn on or the fall winterization.
Okay.
It's.
Anything will be better than April first, though.
Yeah.
I agree with that one hundred percent. Okay. So, another, another question I had about this is there is a rule out there for a five-year rebuild. And I wanted to know if that was more arbitrary or if there's a law or regulation about that or if there's some, some data that supports that, like meantime between beta or data or something like that.
Yeah, I know I read somewhere and I wish I had taken notes that seven years is, the, the systems are designed to last for seven years. But us and other cities, our, our policy matches Wichita, uh, decided to set it at five years. So, if there are any cracks and the system starts to deteriorate, we can catch those. So, the systems, the life of the system is naturally seven years. That's what we.
So, the manufacturers are saying their meantime between beta your lifecycle is a seven year lifecycle?
Right.
Okay. All right.
I think Ann had weighed in on the June or the, the summer month date.
Yeah, the, the November versus June. One of the reasons we had said it earlier is because over the winter, systems crack and you're going to catch most of them. The, any, any issues you're going to catch in the spring when you start it up. And so, that's why you want to test the backflows in the spring, early summer, to make sure that there is no contamination. If you wait until November, if there was anything that happened, you run the risk of contaminating your system the whole entire summer. So, that's why we had recommended the June instead of the fall.
So, hopefully they're testing in May and submitting in June. Okay.
And, and the concern is very real for freezing temperatures in April. That's May, June would be. You're, you're weighing your risks, as you said.
So, i- if one of those backflow preventers were to fail, what is the risk of, you know, the city water supply being infected? What, what condition, other conditions have to occur for that to happen?
Has to flow back down the pipe, the meter, and then goes into your water system.
And I'm not, I, I can't really answer that because I'm not very familiar with those systems. Stephanie actually attended a backflow prevention certification class. So, she would be very, very adept at being able to answer that, whereas I have not.
Okay. I was just curious because I, the, the question that I was having is, it, it seems to me, and I'm not an engineer, so maybe somebody else wants to weigh in. But, uh, that you would also have to potentially lose pressure in the city's water system for that to actually be a problem, which I, I don't know that. I know of any time where the city's water system has ever lost pressure. And so.
Knock on wood.
Knock on some wood.
That is. That would be my thought as well, but Stephanie may have other information after attending that class.
It's, it's one of those things. I think you have to have several pieces in place.
Yeah.
You don't want that perfect storm to ever happen. So, you need to keep those pieces in place to keep that perfect storm from ever happening. So.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just redundant system. Just same, same reason we, we put rules on, say, the exotic peck shop. Redundant systems, make sure that nothing, you know, could ever happen. So, makes sense.
Anything else on backflow prevention?
Now, we're going to go June first. Is that what it was?
I think that was a consensus.
Yeah, I think so.
June first.
June first. I think that makes the most sense.
The, the only other consideration that I'll throw out there just before we move on is one, one other thing to think about from my, just burden on the homeowner perspective is I, I think most people have somebody come out and blow out their sprinkler systems, you know, to remove the water, to prevent freezing. And so, most folks are going to have, you know, a contractor come out to do that. If you didn't have this backflow certification requirement in the spring, a lot of homeowners would be able to turn their own system on without hiring a contractor to come and do that. Um, because what's typically involved there is turning on a valve.
Right.
Um, and then adjusting your sprinkler heads, which a lot of handy folks in Bel Air do. So, by setting the date at June first, we were effectively going to be requiring folks with sprinklers to have two contractor services in a year. One to do the backflow, one to do the blowout versus just one in the fall. So, I'm not saying that that's necessarily a reason to make a decision, but it's something to think about here.
Well, you always have that anyway. I mean, you always have to turn it on.
Yeah, you always have to turn it off.
But, but what I'm, but what I'm saying is the home, in a lot of cases, the homeowner could turn it on.
Yeah, you don't have to hire someone to turn it on.
You wouldn't have to hire somebody to turn it on.
I never hired anyone to turn mine on.
They don't, you don't blow it out?
You've got a compressor, you don't need anybody to, to turn it off.
Well, sometimes I believe, I believe mine out too.
I know people that turn on their systems, then turn them off.
Yeah, I use a compressor to blow mine out too.
I'm saying, hey, you, you want to, you want to have a sprinkler system? You want to spend money doing your yard?
Well, most of them have a contract that they, they come try the ones to blow it out for winter and the other one to turn it on in the spring.
And there are a lot of people, though, that do, do blow them out themselves. I know that. So.
How do they blow them out?
Get their compressor.
Air compressor.
You go to Home Depot and buy a park for five blocks.
That's all they do. That's all they do. When they do, they look professionals.
I would do it like three times per line. Just, yeah, because, you know, my little compressor.
If you're blowing hot air, you won't have any problems.
All right. Anything else to talk about with backflow prevention?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. One more thing. Um, Councilmember Elsoph asked me to look into how the, uh, contractors are able to figure out whether they're in Bel Air or Wichita because the zip code issue is not lining up. And unfortunately, that's not something we can correct on their end. When the contractors get their license with us, we take them, we put them through a process where we check insurance, we check their address and location, and then they can go start doing business on an individual basis. And so, it's on them to find out where, um, the resident lives. And some, it sounds like some of them go to GIS and some of them use some other system, um, that would make them think that the home is in Wichita. So, what we do do, kind of following up with Stephanie, I'm making sure, um, is when we do get a, um, application, because Wichita is kind of on the same path we're on, that's not within Bel Air and she's gotten one or two, we go ahead and we refund the money and we send it, we, we offer to send it back or send it to Wichita. And we, um, I asked her to follow up on making sure that relationship is reciprocal. So, that way Wichita would send it to us. But there's really not much we can do to get in between that kind of double-check process.
And none of this process is electronic? Is that true?
Not from our end. Of course, our storage, once we get the reports, there's a lot of electronic stuff that happens. But as far as the contractor going with the resident, that's kind of each.
But they, if the contractor's filing the form or the residents are filing the form, there's nothing, no electronic form filing that we have today. Is that true?
That's correct, I believe.
The only thing you can do is put it in, put it on the water letter, uh, that anybody that has a contractor come to their house, make sure they have a Bel Air command.
Yes. And that's something that, as we're looking at the code, now that you've kind of settled on a date to present at the next council meeting of being June first, we also want to have the code, even though it's understood they have to be licensed in Bel Air, we want to add this point of clarification to the code. It'll be posted on the website. The letters have gone out this year. Next year should be better.
Okay. If we want to do something different about the process for decommissioning sprinkler systems, does that need to be in the ordinance? Or is that more of a policy?
That, actually, that would need to, that is a policy right now. That is a policy. Because I read through the ordinance and I still had to follow up with Keith and Stephanie on how they deal with that. Um, yeah, I think it's something that they know Katie, because she went to that class, KDHNE accepts this as a.
So, do we, do we need a, a policy that we adopt here that we reference in that ordinance to say, to, to kind of tie those two together so that it's not maybe such an informal, you know, unknown.
I see what you're saying.
Process there?
Yeah, we can add a line referencing.
They could change it, staff changes every time.
Because it does affect so many residents who don't use their sprinklers. Maybe adding a, um, just, you're saying just generally refer to a policy that would go.
That we would then document and adopt.
Yes.
So, we actually have a policy on that.
Um, so that would probably not come to you at this next meeting. If the ordinance came, we'd probably do that policy at a future meeting.
Okay.
And that policy would just cover backflow prevention for, or backflow systems that have gone offline? Is that what you're thinking? Or do you want it to cover green?
It might be interesting to ask Stephanie if there are other kind of informal things that she does around this that we would want to capture in an overall backflow policy.
Don't make it too complicated because they don't understand it.
Yeah. And I think something that'll help with folks' understanding of just having all of this stuff in, in writing. And once it's in a written ordinance and a written policy, then we can have, you know, documentation that gets sent out or, you know, postings that actually, you know, are reflective of that. And it's more formal that way.
I had probably about, I think it was six or seven calls. I asked every one of them, do you have a computer? No. Almost, I thought this one, one was going to tell me it was none of my business, but.
Well, yeah. And to, you know, if, if we have this, it's something that we could even have a write-up that goes out in the water bill a- after we get through with all this.
That's why I keep telling you, you need to tell them in the water bill because they don't, older people don't keep computers anymore. They're not knowledgeable like you guys are.
Definitely a lot of marketing and kind of.
So, it doesn't help to tweet or Twitter or whatever.
Anything else we want to discuss before I close our workshop?
We're almost thirty-five minutes late on the special meeting.
I was just going to mention, you know, this last comment, you know, leave it the direction of this city engineer on the date. Would it, would it make sense for the date to be in that policy instead of having the date in the actual ordinance that way? That needed to be changed at some point in the future would not be in an ordinance?
I thought about that, but I thought because this is one of those ordinances that's so black and white, you know, that it, it's kind of like the minimum DUI, you know, you have blood alcohol, it has to be this and that. But I thought I leaned towards including a certain date. But, I mean, I generally prefer not to include those dates in an ordinance. It, it's such a hot button issue that sometimes I, I just think this one might, I'm just kind of fifty, fifty-one, or forty-nine, fifty-one, fifty percent of, fifty-one percent, that leaning towards including it in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right. If not.
These guys want to go home.
We got to close our workshop.
Been here all day.